I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to the June 30th, 2014, regular meeting of the Marquette City Commission. If everyone would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Commissioner Ken Benzey?
Here.
Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Coyne?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Here.
And Mayor Neme?
Here.
The next item is note of agenda changes. I'm suggesting that we take items nine through 12 and 14 through 18 and move them to the consent agenda. Many of them are bids where they're low bids and other routine items. Commissioner Coyne?
It's been moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Coyne. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to move items nine through 12 and items 14 through 18 to the consent agenda. They would be lettered in succession, in succession, starting with the letter J and ending somewhere. All in favor, say yes.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. The motions are passed unanimously, including those that require a roll call. Next, we should have on a... Oh, that's just the... I'm sorry, that's just amending the agenda. Now we need to approve the agenda, final approval. Commissioner Ryan?
I would move the agenda be approved as amended.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, say yes.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously. The next item is announcements. I have the usual list of boards and commissions. I will not read through them all, but I'll just repeat my spiel about the fact that we have a good application on the city's website. If you do want to apply for a board and commission, you can fill out the application online, you can mail it in online, you could print it out and bring it to the city manager's office. And I encourage everyone to look at the... on the website, at the openings that we have, and apply for those. We do need help with our boards and commissions. Secondly, I'd just like to remind people that on Wednesday, July 2nd, at 7:00 PM in the MGH conference room, Market General Hospital will have a public forum on their proposed helicopter service. Anyone who's concerned about that or interested in that item can attend the public forum. Again, that's July 2nd at 7:00 PM in MGH Conference Room 1. Where Conference Room 1 is in MGH, I'm not sure. So you'll have to find that on your own. Those are all the announcements I have at this time. We have, well, I guess there's... we have some presentations to... with item one, but before that, I have one other presentation I want to sneak in before the presentation by State Representative Kivila of the Officer of the Year. City Chief Financial Officer Gary Simpson, would you meet me up at the podium, please? Just before the commission meeting, the commission had a work session where we reviewed the annual audit. The audit has been June 30, 2013?
Thirteen.
Yes. That's the last June 30 audit that we'll be reviewing. And as we've done a number of years, we've got from the Government Finance Officers Association a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This presented to the city of Marquette, Michigan, for its comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2013. And this is... this means that our finance report meets all standards of that association and that it is... it has a number of additional items, additional information, that go beyond just a simple audit. And we have Chief Financial Officer Simpson and his staff and the city treasurer to thank for this. So I'd like to present this to CFO Simpson and congratulate him on the fine job. Thank you.
As much as I would like to take full credit for this, I can't... I've got to thank my staff, particularly Diane Giddens, the treasurer, and Mary Slitt, the staff accountant. They do a tremendous amount of work. The auditing firm, Anderson-Tatman, they help quite a bit. And also, I've got to thank my predecessor. This is the 28th year in a row we've won this award. My predecessor, Donna Kohut, got it started, and I've kind of taken it over. And my goal is to not be the one that has to come up here and say, "We didn't get the awards." So that's my motivation, but thank you. It's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Kivila would join me up here. He has a presentation that he's going to make.
Well, thank you, Your Honor, members of the commission. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I've got to apologize for my partner in the legislature, Senator Casperson. Tried to get up here in time and got hung up on some other business, so he wanted me to send his regards as well. I'm here today to present a very special tribute from the state of Michigan, recognizing Sergeant Marty Munger on his being selected as Market County Officer of the Year. I'm not going to read through all the words because it's long and lengthy, like we tend to get, but it's signed by myself, by Senator Casperson, and by Governor Rick Snyder. And I just wanted to say that... I was telling the chief before the meeting started that I really felt this was very appropriate because even though Marty works for the city of Marquette and he's a city police officer, he really benefits the entire county. With Nero before Frodo, he's been caretaker for the dogs. And anywhere in the county that needs, well, anywhere across the state, you've been all over. So he helps make our community a safer place. So Marty, on behalf of the state of Michigan, congratulations.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is an All-America City Award presentation by Assistant City Manager Kyle Whitney. Kyle?
Thank you, Your Honor, commissioners. This is probably going to throw a bit of a wrench in everything, but there's a few people, some of whom are dressed like me. Can you all just please stand up, come up to the podium? First, and Mayor Protem Stonehouse, if you will, who's also not dressed like us. First, I just want to say thank you for putting us near the top of your agenda tonight. As I was... Sorry. I was here a couple of months ago, kind of describing the All-America Cities process. City Marquette was chosen as a finalist for the All-America City Award, which is a national civic award given out every year to 10 cities across the country. We were one of 25 finalists, I believe, and we kind of went through a process to pull together a representative group of community members, I think. There were 11 people in total that went from the city, from the library, the YMCA, the DDA, and the Marquette Food Co-op, representing everything from, you know, regional food distribution networks to waterfront safety and waterfront reclamation to, you know, mentorship programs run through the YMCA. And I think I speak for everyone here. We spent a fair amount of time talking about it on the trip back from Denver. But it provided us with a great venue to tell everyone about Marquette, to kind of get the word out about the great things that are happening in Marquette, but also to see what everybody else around the country is doing and to see some of the best things that there are on a civic level from around the country. And then, I think, on a more regional level, it allowed a group of people from organizations that don't always work hand in hand necessarily. It allowed that group of people to coalesce around a goal and to build a network locally and regionally that I think is going to serve us all well moving into the future. And the theme on our shirts, actually, was how connected everything in Marquette is. We tried to form a presentation that represented everything and told that story, and it was almost impossible to separate the different threads, I guess. We were not one of the 10 winners. I like to think we were probably number 11, but they didn't give us a ranking. So with that, I know the mayor has some... something he'd like to give out, I guess, but thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. I do have a number of certificates of appreciation, and I just want to say I'm certain we were number 11. I know we're winners. And I think this is an example of what's great about our community. We had many different people from many different organizations, and I know the organizations probably footed the bill for you. We sent our people, but I think, more importantly, each of you individually gave a lot in time, which you weren't compensated for, and your community appreciates it. We'll start out with Mayor Protem Stonehouse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Whitney, Kyle Whitney. Thank you. Ben Platt. He's not here, okay. Trevor Buchanan. Okay. Ruth Almin. Thank you. Lisa Coombs Drew. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dominic Davis.
Thank you.
Samantha Collins.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Monte.
Thank you.
Jamie Van Echavort.
Thank you.
And Jane Ryan, Ben Platt, and Trevor Buchanan also were part of the group. They weren't able to make it tonight, so we will get them these certificates of appreciation. And again, thank you on behalf of your community.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by the Marquette Housing Commission by Chair Dottie LaJoy.
Hello, and thank you for providing the opportunity for us to present the Marquette Housing Commission to you tonight. We are chartered under the laws of the state of Michigan to provide and administer affordable housing programs for the citizens of the city of Marquette. We provide 254 units of public housing within the city limits, and we provide a Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program, which administers 50 housing choice vouchers in the city of Marquette and the outlying areas. Our mission statement is to provide a safe, sanitary, affordable housing to low and moderate income individuals and families and to promote personal responsibility and self-sufficiency to residents while maintaining fiscal integrity. Also, to provide economic opportunity and suitable living environment free from discrimination. Our board meets on the fourth Tuesday of every month at 5:15 PM in the boardroom at Pine Ridge Apartments, 316 Pine Street, Marquette, and our minutes are available online on our website at www.mqthc.org. We're a five-member governing board appointed by the city commission. Our commission members are Emily Coyne, is our vice president, Andrew Kelkic is our commissioner, Igor Cruhak is another commissioner. I'm Dottie LaJoy, the president, and we have one open position. Staff members are Sharon Kivico, executive director, Linda Purvis, executive assistant and housing choice voucher coordinator, Heidi Rosenberg, project manager for Pine Ridge, Dave Wiegand II, project manager for Lake Superior Village, Jacini Bennett, occupancy specialist for Lake Superior Village, Lloyd Dupra, Jeff Harry, Randy LaHillier, Chris Clark, Justin Vasu is our maintenance and mechanics. Maintenance mechanics. Our funding comes from HUD, Housing Urban and Development. We also receive funding from our tenant rent and repair charges and our rooftop antennas, and there's no cost to the city of Marquette. We are located on the east side of the city of Marquette. Our tenants are elderly, disabled, low and low income. We have 140 units that are one, two, and three bedrooms. The tenants pay 30% of their annual gross income for rent, and there's a $50 minimum for utilities such as gas, electric, water, and sewer. Cable and telephone are not included. We provide a secure building with free parking. We have a library with computers and free internet access, 24-hour emergency maintenance, onsite Marktran bus stop with a shelter that you see there. There's a community room with air conditioning that we put in last year, outdoor seating area, onsite laundry, and small pets are allowed. Some of the improvements that are going on right now, we have gone on. We've remodeled public bathrooms and laundry facilities. There's been the installation of wooden closet doors in apartments. We painted all three stairwells, landscaping, new outdoor patio furniture, newly remodeled administrative offices, and the exterior windows are scheduled for washing this summer. This is some of the new laundry facilities that we put in. There's actually 24 of them, along with a handicap accessible folding tables. And these are the new ninth-floor commons area and hallway furniture. And then on the ninth floor, out the window that you see off to the right, is a beautiful view of Lake Superior. This is the public bathroom updates. And we do have a waitlist. There are 39 applicants on our waitlist, and applicants receive preference points for being a resident of the city of Marquette, working family, elderly, or disabled, and a student or individual or family that would result in rent higher than 200 per month. And it is a six-to-12-month anticipated wait time. Lake Superior Village is located next to Northern Michigan University. It has 114 townhouses of... or townhomes of family housing. There's access to public transportation and transportation to Marquette area public schools and onsite management. Two, three, and four-bedroom units are available. There's 24-hour emergency maintenance. There's a community garden, a large playground and basketball court, private patios and secure storage, YMCA-sponsored youth center, and most pets are welcome. These are some photos from our Father's Day celebration. And some of the improvements this year are rebuilt community garden at the Youth and Family Center. 10 sets of cabinets are being replaced. We're installing community barbecue pits in common areas, repairing benches and tables throughout the property, and replacing bathroom cabinets and sinks in four-bedroom units. Here's some photos of our community garden, and this is kind of a little before and after of the cabinets. And there's a waitlist to get into Lake Superior Village as well. Currently, the application waitlist is open for three and four bedrooms, but there are 31 families waiting for a two-bedroom, 11 families are waiting for a three-bedroom, five families are waiting for a four-bedroom, and the wait time for a two-bedroom is three months to a year. Three-bedrooms are less than six months, four-bedrooms are six months or more, and wait time is dependent on availability and subject to change. Community service is a requirement unless they are exempt. Each adult family member must either contribute eight hours per month of community service within the community or participate in economic self-sufficiency program. The Housing Choice Voucher Program, also called Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. This provides rental assistance to low-income households who live in privately-owned homes or housing. The families have more freedom in choosing the units. The units must pass a housing quality standard inspection, meaning they must be... their health and safety issues must be addressed before the family can move in. Units can be located anywhere in Marquette County, including the cities of Gwin, Nagani, Ishbaming, and Marquette. The household receives rental assistance in a location that works best for them, and the rental assistance is tenant-based or portable. That means that assistance is tied to the family and follows the family. As long as they maintain eligibility, they can move to another district. After being in the Marquette Housing Commission District for one year, they can move to another district and receive assistance as well. The family pays approximately 30% of their adjusted gross monthly income as their share of rent to the landlord... This is how the system works, by the way. And then, Marquette Housing Commission pays the landlord the remaining amount, and this is known as the housing assistance payment. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is currently assisting 43 families in Marquette and the outlying areas, not including the families with temporary vouchers searching for units to lease that fall under the payment standard and comply with HQS standards. To apply, you can go to Pine Ridge or Lake Superior Village, or you can also print out applications from the website, and the Housing Choice Voucher Program is currently accepting And also, it was mentioned that none of the commissioners have had an opportunity to visit any of our... either of our facilities, and so we'd like to extend an invitation for you to come and visit either Pine Ridge or Lake Superior Village. Sharon Kivico is here, our executive director, and you could call her office and make an appointment.
Sarah's been there.
What's that?
Sarah's been there.
Yes, oh, Sarah, yeah, you've been there. You don't have to go there. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Campana? Commissioner Campana?
Dottie, you have a waiting list for both places. Do you always have a waiting list, year in, year out? Is there...
It's my understanding, yes, right? Yeah.
So is there a need for more, or do you pretty well handle what you have?
I would say that's... Oh, I would say personally, that's an indication that there's a need for more.
Well, if you always have a waiting list, perhaps. Well, that's... I think that's encouraging, but...
We need to maintain a waiting list because you don't want to have vacancies. However, our waiting lists tend to be rather lengthy, so we could definitely use more affordable housing in Marquette.
Well, how about turnover? Do you have exceptional turnover, or are they pretty steady renters?
I think Pine Ridge is pretty steady.
Sharon, you might go up to the microphone because people on TV won't necessarily be able to hear what you're saying.
I'm Sharon Kivico. Our waiting lists, as I was saying, our waiting lists are currently all open, and they are lengthy, but we need to maintain some sort of waiting list to be able to have available... or have people ready when we turn... our apartments turn over. Right now, we're looking at probably a 10% turnover annually at Pine Ridge, which is 140 apartments, and we're probably looking at a 30% to 40% turnover annually at Lake Superior Village. Families tend to move more. I think that's just a need, you know, how families work. And we have several people that are graduating from college also in both places that are moving out, so springtime is a time for people to move.
Any other questions? Any commissioner?
I'd just like to say that I've, you know, in my other life, I've been to both places many times, and over the years, it seems to actually you are improving the place, so to your credit, you know, it's kind of a nice place.
My predecessor, Bonnie, did a lot of work on the exteriors and LSV and...
Yes.
...trying to continue to go in that direction.
I have one question on the housing voucher program. Is that just for families, or could individuals access that, or...
Housing Choice Voucher is for anybody.
Okay. But you kind of try to direct it for families because that's what you deal with pretty much, mostly, or...
We are looking at changing our administrative plan so that we are providing preference points to families.
Okay.
So a family will be higher on the waiting list than a single individual.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is boards and committees. Is Mr. Joshua Morrison here? Okay. Would you meet me at the podium up here, please?
We have Joshua Morrison here. We're welcoming him to the Prescott Park Advisory Committee, and we have a city pin for you. When you complete your service, we'll have a shirt and other things, but we appreciate your volunteer... your willingness to volunteer. As I mentioned at the start, we have a lot of vacancies, and our city can't operate without the boards and commissions. It's an integral part of the city, and we certainly appreciate you doing that. Would you like to say anything, or...
I didn't plan anything, but I'd just like to thank you all for having me and for the opportunity to serve on the Prescott Park Advisory Committee. I look forward to working with the other members. Thank you.
Okay. The next item, we have one reappointment. Carol Johnson to the Investment Advisory Board for a term ending July 1, 2017. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Commissioner Ken Benzey?
I move that we reappoint Carol Johnson to the Investment Advisory Board for a term ending on July 1, 2017.
Okay. Is there a second to this? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Ken Benzey, anything further on your motion?
I'd just like to thank Carol for stepping up again and being part of our team.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
Nothing further.
Okay. It's been moved by Commissioner Ken Benzey, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to reappoint Carol Johnson to the Investment Advisory Board for a term ending July 1, 2017. All commissioners in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to the motion, say no. The motion is passed unanimously. Now we've come to the point in our meeting, which is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments, and please use the podium right in front of the dyes to make public comment.
Good evening. My name is Jason McCarthy. I am the planner for Market Township, and I'll be speaking on the proposed truck ordinance 608 in lieu of Supervisor Liberta...
Your physical addresses?
I'm sorry?
Your physical addresses?
325 Martha Woods Drive. As I was saying, I'll be speaking to the proposed truck ordinance 608 in lieu of Supervisor Liberta, who was not able to attend tonight, and I see that the truck ordinance didn't make it out of the consent agenda for this evening. After review of the recently provided city of Marquette proposed truck route ordinance and map, Market Township would like to share some concerns regarding the potential impact to current traffic patterns in the community. Market Township remains committed to enhancing the safety of the US 41 corridor for all residents, business owners, and travelers. As previously stated, on many occasions, we believe the city needs to designate a north-south truck route to aid in this endeavor, and that a carefully researched long-term traffic plan should be developed with all the region's stakeholders' input and cooperation. To that end, Market Township will continue to pursue opportunities to work with interested stakeholders in developing traffic master plans that will not only allow us to pursue routes that achieve increased safety and decreased congestion, but also aid in the region in planning for the management of both commercial and residential traffic into the future. Unfortunately, as the map and ordinance submitted lack a viable alternative for north-south truck routing through the city of Marquette, necessitating trucks to utilize the heaviest trafficked corridor in the UP rather than navigating a more direct route, we cannot support the proposed ordinance as presented. We fully understand that moving commercial truck traffic out of the city but into the township appears to alleviate the city of Marquette's commercial traffic problems. However, shifting traffic... shifting truck traffic from the city into the township to then have them add to the congestion in an already congested corridor will only exacerbate a regional issue. By treating the symptom instead of the disease, you will spread the problem into other areas. For example, with your proposed route, a truck making a delivery to NMU from the south via M553 will now be required to make a Michigan left at the McClellan 41 intersection, proceed through the US 41 corridor to the target intersection, take a right, and travel down Wright Street to the final destination. Then, the same return trip and back out of the most heavily trafficked highway in the UP through a vibrant commercial district and back to the McClellan Avenue. Currently, the same truck would just travel completely through the McClellan Avenue without entering 41 for the entire transaction. Market Township will continue to carefully research, plan, and develop our roads master plan with consideration and cooperation of interested and engaged stakeholders. The city of Marquette proposed truck route ordinance does not move us in that direction and instead puts up barriers to healthy engagement of a solutions-based regional effort. We hope that the commission will consider the... We hope that the commission will consider the opinions of all interested parties before adoption of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
I'm Steve Pence, I reside at 453 East Michigan Street in Marquette. Thank you, Honorable Mayor Niemi and Commissioners, for allowing this time for public comment. I'm going to speak on the same topic, so that's why I jumped up, so there's some continuity. For going on three years now, I have had the enviable job of representing District One of the County Board of Commissioners. I say enviable, enviable because two decent and otherwise sane men are running for that job this year. So it must truly be enviable, but more than enviable, it's a difficult position. It's a difficult position because I represent approximately one-third of the City of Marquette, one-half of Marquette Township, and all of Powell Township. Reconciling those diverse needs is difficult at best. As I study your proposed ordinance, I have the same conclusions that the previous speaker have, the concern being this, that the problem is shifted to other members of our greater Marquette community. Those who use an already too busy corridor, as suggested by the previous speaker, and a very dangerous highway, will be routed in an unproductive way, both commercially and in terms of automobile accidents and time and considerations, and the safety of people who live in Marquette Township and the people who travel the highway. I know that this learned commission understands that government does best when it does the greatest good for the greatest number of people. I suggest to you that this does not do the greatest good for the greatest number of people. When I first took my job on the County Board some almost three years ago, I had the pleasure of meeting with County Board Commissioner Haikula, City Commissioner Kambenzi, and former Commissioner Schneider, and former mayor, now Commissioner Mike Coyne. We talked specifically about one thing, cooperation between units of government, in a history that hasn't always been so good with the City of Marquette and its neighbors without assigning fault to those realities. On the County Board, we have tried to live by that model of working cooperatively with other units of government. When Marquette Township came to us some time ago and said they were having problems with the dark stores and a false revaluation suggesting that those stores should pay taxes as if they were empty, we were the only local unit of government who stepped up, the County Board, to support them. We went to the city some few weeks ago when we found out about the Prescott Power Plant and their attempts to be revalued, and we on our own reached out to the city, and we said, "We would help you with that endeavor, and I expect tomorrow night, we will pass some funding to assist you in that endeavor." This plan falls short of that goal of regional cooperation, cooperation between neighbors. Today, one of my constituents, and I've heard from my constituents...
You need to finish up your remarks.
Can I do thirty seconds?
Well, fifteen.
Today, one of my constituents said, "There is no reasonable justification for routing east and southbound traffic to the very busy Walmart-Target intersection in US-41," and then having them travel the entire busy corridor eastbound to get to M-53 or South Front Street. And for those reasons, that this shifts the problem to your neighbors, I would respectfully ask that you search for other alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pence.
Dave Brasser, 395 Mesk Avenue. I'm here talking about my slip rent. On May 5th, okay, excuse me, on April 15th, I paid my slip rent as of $1,759. I sold my boat on May 3rd. On May 5th, I've gone to the park and rec office, talked to Kim, I told her I sold my boat. She says, "Dave, we heard that, we're really happy for you. And another thing, we're refunding your total money." Excellent. She said, "There's only one catch, you have to wait three weeks, because the city only does their billing, their payouts, once a month." I said, "I have no problem with that whatsoever." I said, "Just nice to get my money back." So, so as I stand there talking to her, she says, "One more thing, do you have a scrap piece of paper with you or anything?" And I said, "Well, what for?" She says, "I want you to sign your name, showing that you released your slip back to the City of Marquette." I said, "I have no problem with that, I'm sure you have a piece of paper back there." She brought me a piece of paper, I signed it. I, Dave Brasser, gave up my slip on this day. So, I'm waiting for the 29th to come, and she had told me my check would be in the mail. It didn't come, I'm waiting until the 4th or the 5th of the next month. I've gone back there, and she says, "Dave, what can I do for you?" I said, "I haven't received my check." She goes, "Well, you should have." I said, "I haven't." She went on the computer, she looked, she couldn't find nothing about it. She finally, she kept on looking, and she says, "Oh, here it is, and by the way, you're only getting half your money's back." I said, "What?" I said, "I want to set a set of rules." I said, "I didn't say no more, I left." Well, the reason she wanted me to sign that paper, and she was in a hurry anxiously for me to sign that, was, once I signed off, the City of Marquette can rent my slip out to the next person in the waiting line, which was the Currians. So they ended up getting that slip for the seventeen fifty-nine like I had paid. The City of Marquette kept from me eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars of my money. My boat did not see the marina, did not see the slip, nothing, after they promised me I was getting my money back, so they double dipped. They got the next person, they got the full amount of money from them, turned around, kept my half my money. And I think it's very unfair. I just don't understand how they operate down there. I mean, I didn't get the money's back from my slip when my dock was messed up for two years, and it still was, it's fixed, it's still being fixed probably today. That's a handicap dock. I had to put an extra, extra long swim platform that cost me twenty-seven hundred dollars on it, for people getting in my boat to fall into the water, and that's happened many a times. I even cheated and put a handle up that people could hang onto a handle, which were not allowed to have, and I got away with that some or another. And I figured it was safety. And I'd signed up, and the rules are there. I could have kept my slip until July 1st, put my small fishing boat in and fished up until tomorrow, the next day, or whatever. I was willing to give up my slip, because they told me I was getting my full amount of money back. And that's why she was so anxious, she knew what she was doing. And I think it's pretty sneaky for her to even pull something like this.
You need to finish up your comments, Mr. Brasser.
Pardon?
You need to finish up your comments here.
Well, I think someone should look into this, because I think it's very unfair to be treated like this. Thank you.
My name is Gigi Gordon, I live at 344 East Arch in Marquette. I am here in my personal capacity and also on behalf of the Marquette Unitarian Universalist Congregation, many of which, of whose members are city residents. On the fifteenth of April of this year, some two and a half months ago, members of our congregation came before you to ask you to consider the adoption of a city ordinance that would prohibit discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression. Some of you have indicated to us privately that you are, tend to favor such a step, but we have seen no official action yet, and we await every issuance of the agenda to see if this is going to come forward. I just want to reiterate our request that you consider this seriously. Fifteen to twenty cities or municipalities below the bridge in Michigan have adopted such ordinances, and Marquette has the opportunity to be the first municipality above the bridge to do so. To do so would make this city and would illustrate that the city is inclusive, is progressive, is truly an all-American city, an all-American city of the 21st century. The time to take action is now, and we respectfully ask you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Hi, my name is Paul Doobie, I live on McClellan Avenue, 1207, and I'd like to speak about the latest discussion on the plan for routing, designating McClellan Avenue as a truck route. Now, clearly, it is a truck route right now, because I get woken up every morning at 6:30 in the morning when the heavy trucks come by, and it's pretty constant every day in terms of the amount of traffic we have. I actually spoke to the committee before we extended McClellan Avenue, and it turned out that the extension really hasn't changed much, except that the amount of truck traffic we have on McClellan now is constant. Now, you, if you don't live on McClellan, you don't realize what the impact of having trucks constantly up and down the street is. I put a new driveway, a new driveway in three years ago. It is cracked, I mean, completely in three years. I had to replace tile in the floor of the entryway, because the house vibrates when the trucks start in the morning. Now, I know this is going to be a truck route, you're going to have trucks go up and down the street, but the question is, do we have to have twenty-wheelers loaded with logs and loaded with concrete and other products? Because we're destroying the neighborhood. I mean, this is as much of the neighborhood you wanted to protect on West Avenue when you made the extension. Well, McClellan's an avenue, but you can't actually walk across the street without taking your life in your hands, because there's so much traffic on McClellan. So there are things we can do while still maintaining a truck route here. I mean, we could put a limit on the amount of weight that we have on the street. We can maybe put the bike path in, even though I was opposed to that. That would slow it down. The traffic is not enforced on McClellan, I'm telling you, it isn't, and when there's not traffic, people use it as a speedway. So there's a lot of issues living on McClellan. So I put a lot of money in my house to get it ready to sell, because I'm retired now and I want to move to another place, a smaller place. People come in, they look at my house, and they say, "You've got a beautiful house, but it's too much traffic." So how can we make this neighborhood a neighborhood again? And if you'll just bear with me, let me read, this is from Wikipedia, the first paragraph. "A residential area, which McClellan Avenue is, a residential area. If you've been by it, there are houses on every lot. Residential area is a land use in which housing predominates, as opposed to industrial and commercial areas. Housing may vary significantly between and through residential areas. These include single-family housing, multifamily housing, residential or mobile homes. Zoning for residential use may permit some services or work opportunities, or may totally exclude business and industry. It may permit high-density land use, or only permit low-density uses. Residential zoning usually includes a smaller FAR than business, commercial, industrial, manufacturing zone..."
Doobie, you have to finish up.
Okay. What I'm trying to say is, this is a residential, you can label it as a truck use, but it's still residential. People have to live on that street, and by doing this, you're going to make it less livable. That's all my comments.
Thank you.
My name is Fritz Erickson, I live at 1440 Center Street, and I've lived there for four days now, as I am the new president of Northern Michigan University. I come before you today just to introduce myself, but to also say how impressed I am with the city for the work on the Smart Zone. I had the opportunity to join the mayor and the city manager in Holton with the extension of the Smart Zone to Marquette. This seems to me to be an extraordinary opportunity for our community, and I look forward to working with you as that and many other projects move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson.
My name is Mike Beck, 1005 Aloe A. I'll just talk about a couple of things here, starting with the truck route. So, Marquette City Commission has been planning McClellan Avenue extension as a truck route since about 1971. It's been over forty years the city's been planning this to be a truck route as a solution for truck traffic driving through the city. 2008, the commission decided they needed to move forward on the McClellan Avenue extension for north-south truck route through the city, said the city manager at the time. 2010, the Marquette City Commission recognized it very important for the city to do this. I believe Commissioner Stonehouse said at the time that it's very important for the city that we do this. And at that time, the city accepted about nine hundred thousand dollars from the federal government and about four hundred thousand dollars from MDOT to develop the McClellan Avenue truck route extension. The city bought properties, mitigated wetlands for this truck route. It's been thirty-plus years in the making, said Mayor John Keeble, 2012. And there was a ribbon ceremony where the commission invited city commissioners from the last forty years to come and celebrate that the Marquette was moving forward on a truck route through the city. So I don't know what happened there. To inject a little levity, perhaps, the city has misplaced the compass, but perhaps it can be found again in short order. Another aspect that I'm concerned about with the city moving forward is the dutiful waterfront preservation that the city has long been entertaining. Preserving the waterfront is something that many citizens hold very dear. And unfortunately, the last year, the city commission decided to rezone the waterfront to allow large homes in the east of Lake Shore. And we've also had this issue with the, a private group wanting to dig into public property on a lakefront. Certainly, there's better options to allow a private club to develop on the waterfront, perhaps at the existing brownfield property north of the hotel or in conjunction with the marina. There's plenty of opportunities to allow this to happen. But again, we seem to have lost the compass on the waterfront preservation. The last thing is on the local development finance authority. I understand that economic development is paramount for keeping the city moving forward, but we do not have a local development finance authority standing to take care of this. So you're asking to expand powers of a phantom authority to capture taxes, improve value of taxes across a wide swath of millage financing for the library and other things, and it's not just school taxes. So I think the city residents should be concerned. Is LDFA, well, who is going to run this? Do you have a group of people ready to administer the LDFA? Mayor Niemi said they have a problem finding members to serve with boards and commissions. So expanding the powers of an LDFA to capture taxes across the entire city, something that should leave some reservation amongst the city commission. But hopefully, we can find that compass, maybe somebody took it home or needed to calibrate it. I'm sure that if it's returned, McCangely would have no questions asked, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Beck.
My name is Craig Miller, I live at 1013 Aloe A Road, Marquette, Michigan, and on the issue of the truck route, I still support the truck route, because if we keep, if we keep adopting this idea, well, we'll just keep them all out of Marquette, what's going to wind up happening? This issue's going to wind up in a lap at a state legislature, and it could do the same thing there that they did to the truck, to the smoking ordinance in Marquette when it was passed in 1997, they preempted it to the state legislature, and then we could wind up losing the seven hundred thousand dollars that Lundin is going to pay the City of Marquette until they find an alternate truck route. I support the boathouse, because I think it would be a good thing for Marquette. I hope that they can find a way to get, to work this out that makes all sides happy, although I realize that sometimes that's easier said than done. On the truck, on the McClellan truck route, it's been in the making for forty years, I support it. One thing I can say is that when, if you want to have a good economy with jobs, good-paying jobs, you're going to have a certain amount of price to pay for it. And last but not least, I think we've all heard about the recall drive against three city commissioners over this boathouse thing. I don't believe that issue rises to the point where you need to have a recall, but that's only my opinion, and I'm, I'm making these statements because I'm a commission candidate myself, and I don't believe in running stealth campaigns, especially the famous last words, "Well, I haven't made up my mind yet," or, "Oh, don't worry, promise them anything, they'll forget." I don't do that. So if you, if you don't like my positions, fine, vote for the other guy, but I do support it, because I think it's the right way to go, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Matt Ludenberger at 1406 Garfield Road here in Marquette. I guess I'll start off with, amazingly, all of our solutions come when you live nearby the problem. It doesn't matter what the problem is, doesn't matter where it is, but if you don't live on McClellan, if you don't live on Wright Street, it's kind of off the beaten path. Those are all their issues if you don't live on Lake Shore. Again, you might not really have a big say or feel for what goes on on Lake Shore. But here are my thoughts nonetheless, because eventually, that's all I have. First, I'll start with a big one. First, I'll start with a big one. The MGH Hospital, the Wee Power Plants, and the VA collection of stuff. We'll start with that. Basically, I think the city, because I can't do this alone, and I don't even know if any coalition of people could do this, I think the city should enter an agreement with Wee Power Plants, tear down the south power plant structure completely, lease that area off to the new hospital so they can have a helicopter pad, deep water port, help Coast Guard with emergency care in that sense. There, as far as I can tell, are probably only two on Lake Superior that meet somewhat of that demands, and we have an opportunity to allow something to that extension. I'll say on this note, coming from a Coast Guard rescue at one point, going around the break wall to the boathouse is probably the longest stretch of rescue time there is. You see it. It's there. It's coming. But it's still there. It's still coming. Anything to shorten that time down for any sort of rescue would be helpful for everything. So that's my suggestion there. For the old MGH, turn that into a VA hospital. We don't have one in the UP. I mean, Jacobide is close, and that's good. And the suggestion for the old orphanage is a good collection of tasks. So when we talk about jobs, there's about 400 in total of all of that for the next 10 years. Those are the kinds of jobs I'm looking for. Those are the kinds of things where 50 years from now, the power plant has been moved. It does have windmills. It does have solar plants. Because we decided 50 years before, you know what? We need to do something different. You guys can do that. We can't. I mean, we can tell you we want it done, but I don't have enough time to sit on the commission and make it a personal goal. I'm sorry, but I'm asking for your guys' help to somehow fund a way through the state and through the feds to help all of these things happen. It will bring up a lot of these Smart Zone jobs that you guys are looking for on a residual basis, not as a direct class. As far as high-tech jobs, I would suggest as long as your grade school students are not shooting off rockets, high-tech jobs are going to be hard to come by for retaining that talent. A lot of advanced mathematics, a lot of calculus, a lot of AP physics, those are the kind of courses you should look for if you're creating a Smart Zone. MTU has it. Holton has it. Those are the kinds of things that do well there. So as for jobs, look for what our talents are. We have NMU, which creates a number of outdoor rec students. We have nursing students. Again, the VA would be helpful for that. So I'll leave it at that, but thanks for your time, folks.
I'm John Sandrager, 515 Prue Street in Marquette. Members of the city commission, thank you for the opportunity to present my views. I'm here to ask the commission to delay any decision on the special waterfront access to the rowing club until after the November election. I've heard some disturbing statements regarding the rowing clubhouse plans, and I know you won't answer my questions in this forum, but please know thousands of people want to know this information. I'd like to know, is it true that you're pushing ahead with hopes of breaking ground before the November election? Is it true there are plans where the rowing club would receive buyout if the lease is canceled? When will we get to see a term sheet of any lease that we're talking about? And when can we see a contractual agreement? Following the recent work session, I thought the commission was moving away from giving free stuff to the rowing club. I thought the big issue was getting covered storage for hand-powered watercraft. I thought this had been solved because a city-owned locker facility was going to be built near the Hampton. Now I understand the plan is still to give waterfront property access to the rowing clubhouse. I know there have been a great many comments about whether or not we're talking about a private club. I expect in some part of the world, private means different things, but here it means if you're not a dues-paying member, keep out. So for those of us that can't afford or choose not to pay dues for a three-month sport, it means private, keep out. The stated reason the rowers didn't want to belong to the yacht club was the need for indoor storage for their boats. Now with the storage addressed with a public facility, they still want to have their own yacht club on the priceless waterfront that's paid for by the city taxpayers. So I hope I'm wrong about the commission's plans to speed ahead with a decision prior to the election, but regardless of whether the ballot initiative gets the required signatures, this upcoming November election will be a referendum on the free waterfront to the rowing club. Any commission candidate that supports the giveaway will surely be soundly defeated. I know dozens of people that are outraged by fears speaking out against such well-connected people. They plan to voice their opinion in the privacy of the voting booth. The citizen re-elected this commission to look out for all the people, so please do so and hold off until after the election. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sandrager.
Hello. My name is Michael Niger. I live at 313 Jonathan Carver Road. And thank you for allowing me to speak before you this evening regarding both the community boathouse project at Founder's Landing and the commissioner recall issue. I'm speaking for myself only and not for Rita Hodgins' Lake Shore Preservation Ordinance Initiative. If a majority of the Marquette City Commission will support and vote for the construction of an all-inclusive public paddle sports boathouse, one owned, operated, and managed by the city of Marquette, not the rowing club, and one that is open to canoeers, sea kayakers, stand-up paddleboarders, and rowers alike, I will do two things in return. First, I will transfer the $10,000 budget allocated for Rita Hodgins' Lake Shore Preservation Ordinance Initiative and for my commissioner recall initiative to the city of Marquette to help finance a new paddle sports community boathouse, one open to everyone irrespective of vessel type, income level, social status, or political connection. Second, I will move for the dismissal of the three recall petitions against the Honorable Commissioners Coin, Reynolds, Campana, and Campana at the Marquette County Election Commission hearing scheduled for 9:00 AM Wednesday, July 2 in Marquette County Probate Court. Thank you for considering this request, and thank you for your willingness to serve on the Marquette City Commission. I appreciate it very much. I know it's a difficult job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Niger.
Good evening. My name is Mark LeBeau. I live on Four Elder Drive. I'd just like to address the truck routes, the trucking routes, and I have two comments. First off, just regardless of where the routes are allowed within the city, I think it's very important to address things like speed limits and also things along the lines of jake braking, these sorts of things. The gentleman who lived on McClellan, I think, addressed the idea of the impact on the homes there. I think that the impacts of the homes anywhere within the city where there's a truck route are negatively impacted when we let these large, heavy vehicles exceed speed limits. The limits do reduce the impact significantly. So I would like to see either a self-imposment of those sorts of speed limits, the companies that use our city regularly, we could ask them to really talk to their drivers, and then also ask for better enforcement along those pathways. I do agree with the breakup of McClellan Avenue in regards to the safety of our high school students. I currently have a high school student walking to McClellan from my house, or excuse me, walking to the high school from my house. It does not include going across McClellan, but it does include going to visit his friends' homes, which are on the other side of McClellan. And I do agree with the comment that that is a very difficult road to get across. These young people are new to driving. These young people are not always paying attention when they're walking. So I think we're creating a hazard that we could circumvent by simply eliminating that as a corridor. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBeau.
Kelly Drake-Woodward, 951 Highland Drive, Marquette. I'd like to reserve time on item number seven.
Sally Davis, 1711 Grandview Drive. I'd also like to reserve time on item number seven.
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, to speak on items seven, eight, nine. These are my opinions. June 9, Coin attacked me, saying, quote, "I'm still very happy we limited public comment to one occasion, and this evening we saw, I think, good positive results," saying, "Here's a real concern," as opposed to, "I know how difficult it is for my fellow commissioners and frankly, people watching, the demeaning remarks being made, and I just want my fellow commissioners to know and understand, all of us here, I believe, are here to serve the community, and to be the recipient of just the negatives and then just leave the building is very difficult. My sympathies and understanding, and it's just hard sometimes that I think the community understands it's hard. It's very difficult to hear the same thing over and over," end quote. Coin spoke in generalities, ignoring the specifics, despite dozens of reminders and pleas to address them, including another man's accusation that Coin lied about the truck route. Repetition is needed to link like events together, and because you neglect to respond, you're re-asked. Besides, new specifics are offered every time which an analysis of the record will attest to. You bet Coin's happy about limiting public comment for his own benefit. His most audacious slip since threatening me in the men's room was citing me for making a negative statement and leaving the building. He apparently expected me to stay until the end. Most participants leave when their items are up, yet Coin chose not to signal them out. I've attended 237 meetings and up to this year stayed the entire time. Nowadays, I watch the end at home or online. The clincher here is that Coin only shows up for meetings when he's paid to. Neither he nor Ryan bothered to attend meetings prior to their elections, save a big-money item now and then. So who's Coin to complain about someone who prepares comments, shows up, and leaves after commenting because you stole our closing comment, and you won't even face the speaker? For him to attack my volunteerism when he won't show up unless he's paid is the epitome of hypocrisy. Equally strange is Coin's statement, "I know how difficult it is for my fellow commissioners and frankly, people watching." Which people? The seniors who tell me on the sidewalk and at food stores to keep up the effort? Well-meaning types who never condone the unfair treatment of anyone? How dare Coin not consider them in his biased assessment of our public sentiment in this world where those who disagree with him don't exist? You bet the comments are demeaning. Let us investigate why. If the comments made no sense, you could have ridded yourselves of them years ago. So as a latch-ditch effort, you stole closing comment. May this recall petition help you acknowledge the existence of those who appreciate the value of a natural shoreline. We owe our gratitude to the man behind the petition. So reminiscent of 2005, we behold a unique chance to out some of our worst board members in recent memory. The equally guilty Ryan, Neamey, and Stonehouse barely sneaked by, like Cameron Howes, who in my opinion was just as recalled as the other four. Please, people, band together and sign the petition if it makes it that far to end this scourge.
You need to finish up your remarks, Mr. Verito.
I love Marquette enough to fight to it, for it. I'm here to serve the community just as Coin claims to, except free of charge, with thousands of hours in research of preparation and specifics he won't dare face. Instead, he'd steal a common opportunity from all.
Mr. Verito, you need to finish your remarks.
Yes, sir. He would steal a common opportunity from all because he lacks the guts to face one, except to threaten him in a public restroom.
Thank you, Mr. Verito.
Good evening. You're in Malankin, Marquette Drive. Boy, a lot of people have talked. Memories are really short, unfortunately. The Lundin truck route, that was the first thing those people put together when they started applying for all the permits way back when, and nobody really paid any attention because it wasn't a key thing. And this goes back five, six, seven, eight years. When they did the permitting for the entire mine, they also had the route. And then, of course, when it became closer, then people kind of became up in arms because realized what really is happening. And then Plan Two came along with a 595 route, and that seemed to be just an incredible solution to the whole scenario of having everybody use that route, loggers, Lundin, everybody that was using heavy equipment. But then, unfortunately, the people that wanted to save the mosquitoes and the frogs and the smelly swampy land prevailed, and that went away. And so now we're back to where we were again way back when, regional truck route coming through Big Bay, through Marquette, through Township. It really is not any news at all. It's just kind of being rehashed, and I encourage the continuing communication with the adjoining municipalities because we all need to work together. But it's all waters revisited over and over again. There have been solutions, as everybody knows, and unfortunately, the people that like mosquitoes overrode this particular scenario. On the other topic of, boy, recalling commissioners, our federal government is really failing badly with all of the indecisions that they have. Our state government is kind of falling apart, and now we're wanting to recall people because they don't like their opinion or their vote. Traditionally, recall is for something really serious, something bad, something that people just can't live with, not just a decision that you disagree with. That just seems so, so silly, wasting time, energy, and taxpayer dollars and everybody else's energy in trying to do this. If you disagree, do the voting at the voting polls, and I mean, that's soon enough rather than going through this recall. It's really an insult to our whole system of government. The recall position was designed for some really, really bad things, and disagreeing with one opinion is not a bad thing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Langton. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Hi, I'm Sarah Jankel. I'm from Pinnaburg, Germany. It's nearby Hamburg, and I just wanted to say thank you. Marquette is a really beautiful place. I love it here. I'm here for a visit, and my father's with me here, too. It's the second time here. We're having such a great time, and yeah, thank you kindly for having us here.
My name is Bill Sanders. I live at 105 Country Lane, Green Garden. I came to reserve time on item nine, but I think that passed by the consent agenda.
It's been moved to the consent agenda, yes.
I just want to say thank you on behalf of Michelle and the team that it's another piece of the puzzle coming together for a really great project, and we appreciate your support on that. And then I also wanted to reserve time under item seven in case Chief Angeli has any questions for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Hearing none, we'll close that portion of the meeting, and we will move on to the consent agenda. It's been expanded with the addition of items number nine, 10, 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, and 18. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with the consent agenda? Commissioner Ryan?
I move the consent agenda be approved.
Okay. We have one on the bills payable. Oh, yes. On the bills payable, we are going to have to withdraw a check for Commissioner Stonehouse. He would have a conflict.
And that motion would include approving the consent agenda, including bills payable with the exception of an expense check to Commissioner Stonehouse.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Kam Benzey?
Support.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan, anything further?
No, this is a way to deal with a lot of routine items. Many of them are items that will come back for further action before this commission's passed.
Yes. In fact, I'd like to note that on the consent agenda, we are setting a public hearing so those people who want to address the truck route would have another opportunity at the next meeting, I believe. Commissioner Kam Benzey, anything further?
Nothing further, thanks.
Okay. All in favor approving the consent agenda with the exception of the check to Commissioner Stonehouse, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion is passed unanimously. We now have the issue of the check, which is a reimbursement to Commissioner Stonehouse. We now have the issue of the check, which is a reimbursement to Commissioner Stonehouse for his travel to the All American Cities. Commissioner Ryan?
I would move we approve the payment of the expense check for Commissioner Stonehouse.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Ryan, second by Commissioner Reynolds, to approve payment of the check to Commissioner Stonehouse, and he would be allowed to abstain. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. And Commissioner, our mayor pro tem, Stonehouse, abstains. The motion is approved, six to zero with one abstention. The next item on the agenda is our, let's see, the unfinished business area. We have a brief presentation by Chief Angeli on the municipal community rowing club voters. Commissioner, our city manager?
Thank you, Honored. Pursuant to my standing recusal, I'm going to step out of the room.
Yes, your excuse from this item. Do you want to allow citizen comment prior to your presentation, or do you want to? Okay, why don't you proceed with your presentation? At the microphone, I guess. That way we can get you on as a TV star and be certain that your comments will be picked Better thee than me on the picture.
First of all, let me say that it scared me a little bit when you took everything off the agenda and left me out there by myself with item number seven. I thought, wow. But I'm glad that there's one more left out there after me, so. I'm here this evening to hopefully give the city commission a brief, or somewhat brief, update as to what has been progressing or maybe in some people's opinion, lack of progressing with the rowing club situation. I'd like to start out just by rehashing a brief timeline. I'm not going to go into the years of work that has gone into this project, but back on March 10th, the city commission heard a presentation from staff regarding the recommendation to approve the UPCRC at the, with their boathouse plans at the current location in Founder's Landing. If you wouldn't mind me just reading into the record for tonight, the motion that was made that night, the motion was approved as follows. Permit the structure via license to use city property subject to the Upper Peninsula Community Rowing Club obtaining any necessary permits and approvals with ownership of the structure as well as all costs to be retained by the UPCRC. Weigh the license fee and direct the city attorney to prepare the license, including a specified extended time period for the license and a guarantee of public access. With that motion, an amendment was added that the city attorney, Ron Keefe, said that once the license is prepared, it will be brought back before the commission for their final consideration and approval. The city manager at that time also was outside of the room. Now, to me, that represents that staff, of which I was the lead person, was to begin a process of working with the city attorney and other city staff members to bring back a license with outlining the proposal, the use, the facility for final approval. We left that meeting with that charge under consideration or our intent. On April 8th, city staff, mostly based on my urging, began a conversation internally and externally with UPCRC regarding the Cinder Pond as an option. I made that decision based on three things, some zoning issues with the proposed site that had come up after the decision was made, public concerns certainly entered my mind, as did the new opportunity with the Cinder Pond demolition. Bottom line is, I saw an opportunity here that was worth discussing, and I thought we needed to do that before we proceeded. We had two additional meetings internally after that point. On May 21st, I asked and received a city commission work session to be held to discuss and seek input regarding the problems with the current site and options. As a result of that meeting, others may disagree, but I think it's generally felt that the staff felt that we needed to pursue options other than the current selected site, and somewhat specifically moved towards an additional or a second site located near the Hampton Inn, also in the Founder's Landing area. Other concerns came out of that meeting, such as the size and the context, the use of the facility, which we took away and began to work with. We met several times, by we I mean city staff, to discuss how to proceed. We also met with the UPCRC on at least two occasions for their input and to discuss alternatives. And I will say at this point that UPCRC has been nothing but cooperative and open to discussions of any sort, and in no way was hindering the progress or potential progress, excuse me, that we were trying to make in this regard. So eventually, staff in the UPCRC agreed to move ahead with planning the boathouse at the Hampton site with limitations that we hoped were designed to address both city commission concerns and public concerns. Knowing full well, personally me knowing full well, that I was not expecting to take care of everybody's concerns or every concern possible. Generally, what came out of that decision was that we were going to move ahead in this fashion, create somewhat, a somewhat smaller footprint of the building as from originally proposed. No showers or meeting space would be included. Public ownership was a necessity, and I'll explain further in a few minutes why, but it did not in itself create an unusual situation by having public ownership because the city currently has several incidents or instances where we do work in partnership with the public on city-owned facilities. And a couple examples are the Kaufman Sports Complex, which was built by private funds but turned over to the city and maintained somewhat by private funds. The Skateboard Park, which was built by private funds, leased to a private entity and turned over to the city when it was completed. We have examples such as vending areas. The Island Ice Cream Store is one. The Matson Park vending area is another, where we vend to Vangos, as a matter of fact. They rent our facility and are basically paying a lease for that facility and are making a profit. Moosewood location is a building that the city owns, was at one time the sharpest swimming area, and is now being leased to a private organization for their use exclusively. And another, I'm sure there are others, but another one that came to mind for me was Superior Watership Partnership and Land Trust, which is on the island, the old island home that was a caretaker's home there that is a city building that is currently being leased to a private entity for their use, exclusive use. Now, those are just examples of why I thought public ownership would be appropriate in this regard as well. Continuing, because it is going to be a public building, we have to build restrooms. I don't think there's any way around that. Bill Sanders can either back me up or tell me I'm wrong, but because it is a public facility, we are required to provide public restrooms for ADA requirements amongst some other things, so that is a must, and that is something that is being worked into the My concept to the UPCRC was to include both secure and non-secure areas for boat storage. I did not feel it was impractical to consider a non, or to consider, to not consider secure areas as well as non-secure areas together at the same facility. Included with that for the non-secure area, I asked the UPRC to come up with a direct public access storage area for the public, either secure or non-secure, depending on how the public decides to place their boats, in conjunction with the needs of the UPCRC, which I suspect would be a secure area. I also encouraged the UPCRC to build into their plans a public pavilion and picnic area, which I thought would be a nice addition, and I think Mr. Sandrager has often alluded to that pavilion type of situation at the bicycle facility near Marquette Mountain that has a nice ambiance or a nice addition to any construction. So I did ask them to also consider this into their plans. Now, my idea for that would be an area that is open to the public, picnic tables, anybody walking by can use the facility, not necessarily managed by anybody, including the UPCRC, but just to have it as an open space and available. We are looking at, but I'm not sure how it will turn out, is some limited public parking related to this structure. Bill has been working with that idea, and I'm not sure where we're going to be able to go, but something that would be conducive or inclusive with the terrain and the other parking that's available down there. Now, I'm not necessarily looking at a parking lot. There could be some off-street parking, there could be some parallel parking cut into the cutouts on the Lakeshore Drive area or the Founder's Drive area that could accommodate With Ron's input, we have been working or discussing entering into a lease or a license, and I'm not sure we're there yet as to what avenue we're going to take, but certainly the lease is on the table as well as the license. Each have limitations, each have different requirements, but our intent would be to lease or license the facility, both during construction and afterwards to the UPCRC for their management of the facility. Now, as I mentioned earlier, this is consistent with other things that we do with public-private ownerships, but the driving force behind me is that I don't want to create any legacy costs for the city, and that is a standing requirement or request from the city manager in anything that we do. You folks all know we're going through a budget process now, and the budget is something that we're concerned about all the time, so my, our choice in moving that direction would be to have the UPCRC lease it from us, run the facility, much like other facilities, but also, we're also discussing the possibility, which is similar to the Skateboard Park, in that they have an endowment set aside specifically to continue the maintenance, repair, and upkeep of the facility there so that the city does not take on any new legacy costs. And probably last but not least, for this particular list of items, is that the area that we're looking at is zoned form-based code. I would most likely come to the commission at some point and ask for a zoning change to this area to conservation recreation, which is consistent or would be an extension of the rest of the zoning that's in Founder's Landing now. And the reason I would ask that is that according to my expert zoning person, Dennis, is that it's, we can do this one of two ways. We can permit it, or we can change the form-based code to allow the facility, or we can rezone to allow the facility with public ownership. Both would require public ownership. But it's my understanding that to go through the form-based code process is a complicated, lengthy, really unnecessary way of doing things when in fact, a simple zoning change would take care of the same problem. Now, as I mentioned before, you know, this would not be spot zoning or anything of that nature. It would be an extension of a conservation recreation that already exists south from this area. Excuse me. Which brings me to another point that, one other thing that Dennis pointed out to me was that if we were to try to change to form-based code, it would not be consistent with, it would be a specific change within a form-based code, which apparently is not really a good idea in form-based code. It'd be like spot zoning but within form-based code. So I'm standing before you today to say my recommendation at the time would probably be changing the zoning. Now, a little bit more background. In addition to meeting with the UPCRC people and city staff, I have met with Rita Hodgins and others from that group, including Mr. Nyger. In the, in the hope of sharing information and bringing in their opinions into how we proceed, I was not in any way, or did I intend in any way, an attempt to change their minds or to think that I would be able to necessarily change the way they were thinking, but I was hoping I could, I could bring in their thoughts and processes to what we were currently working with. I expressed to them that I thought the commission was listening to what they were saying, just by the fact that I was being directed to a different location, that the current site is, in my best estimate, no longer even something that we're going to be working on, and that I thought that by addressing the public ownership, the size, the other entities or other amenities that are in the building, that we were moving closer towards a more common ground. That may or may not be the case. I felt we were making progress, but apparently that may not be happening. So that's about all I have to report. I know it's all verbally right now because I have not put anything in the writing. We are working on a timetable and to address Mr. Sandrager's questions. We're not trying to break ground before the next election. We are trying to bring this in front of the commission as quickly as we can, mostly because it's taken a while already, and we want to just get it done. Now, you know as well as I do, the staff has a lot of things to do, and the more quickly we get things done and proceed, the better off for all of us. It has nothing to do with an election, or at least breaking ground. I do, I don't remember what else he said, but we're, we're not trying to create any subterfuge or any underlying problems here or plans to try to get anything done under the radar or anything like that, so. My hope is that by presenting this to you tonight, you have an idea where we're going. The public is fully aware of where I'm, of the direction I'm taking, and I think if we're left to our, our own work schedule, we can get it done in a timely fashion.
Thank you, Chief Angeli. Commissioner Ryan?
I just want to make sure, you know, in really short fashion, I get it all right. You're proposing something smaller?
Yes.
You're proposing something at a different location?
Yes.
Near the Hampton Inn?
Yes.
The rowing club would still pay for this, to build it?
Yes.
Who would own it?
The city.
The city would own it?
Yes.
And hopefully, the rowing club would raise funds to also operate it?
Yes.
But it would also be available to the public?
Yes.
But there could be a secured storage area?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Any other quick questions?
Can I just add one thing? I'd really like to thank Chief Angeli because, you know, he's really worked on this, and I think he's tried to do it in such a way that he accommodates the concerns of many people or at least listens to them and tries, trying to find a way to move this forward, so. It goes well beyond what a chief of police is supposed to have to do, so thank you.
Tell me about it. But I am the harbor master, too, so we're close to the harbor, so.
Yes. Commissioner Coin?
A follow-up to Commissioner Ryan's comments. You did not do this on your own after you were, after we had the work session with the community.
No.
Did you hear what the community said, what the commission said, and what we, we gave you direction to do exactly what you just enumerated for Mr. Ryan? Is that correct?
That's correct.
You didn't make this up?
No, no, I pretty much figured it out from the work session, which I, was my intent of the work session.
And would it be fair to say that the work session basically changed the commission's mind, both for the type of boathouse, where it was, and the use of it by the public? And, well, those things?
Yes, that's definitely the...
Is it also fair that you hopefully will sometime have an agreement with, or not an agreement, but a pre, a proposal from the rowing club to say, "This is acceptable," and then we would, you would make a recommendation to the city, and we would probably have a work session where the community would be able to have input?
That would be fair, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anything further from any commissioner? We do have some citizens who desire to address this issue also. Thank you, Chief. First funds, Kelly Drake Woodward.
Thank you, Chief Angely, for bringing everyone up to date on the process. And we also just wanted to add a few things regarding the process for the benefit of the people that may not have been following it all along or not been able to follow it all along. So we are now in the second year of the formal public process. I think our dream started way before that, but during this formal process, I think it's fair to point out that we did receive positive recommendations from three separate city committees, and those positive recommendations then came to the city commission, who received them and deliberated on them and also gave a positive recommendation in the end. We have listened to the opposition, we try to be very considerate of their concerns. We are on the fourth design revision and the third site that we've planned for here. But that's because we sincerely, really want to create a public asset for this community. I think there, there are a few things that we think are important for people to know, and that is, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Our mission is to promote the sport of rowing within the community. We maintain a public recreation program open to area high school students and also to adults of all ages and genders. As a 501(c)(3), we are required to have a public purpose as an organization. So things that we do, we provide training in a sport like these other nonprofit groups in the community, Great Lakes Ski Academy, Little League Baseball, Marquette Figure Skating Club, and the Superior Land Soccer Association. We also provide equipment and organization for an activity that people might not otherwise be able to experience, just like some other nonprofits in the community, which are the Marquette City Band and the Marquette Junior Yacht Club. We host a community event or performance and foster the development of talent, similar to some other nonprofits in the community, such as the Hiawatha Music Corporation or Nonprofit Corp., Marquette Area Blue Society, Lake Superior Theater, and the South Shore Fishing Association. Also, we want to build and maintain a community asset for public use, like some other nonprofits in our community, including the Nokamenon Trail Network and the YMCA. I think everyone can agree that Marquette's nonprofit organizations pay a key, play a key role in creating some of the best things that we have in our community, such as the Kaufman Sports Complex, Skate Plaza, Moosewood Nature Center, Powder Mill Disc Golf Course, and the UP Children's Museum. The reason nonprofits do this is because the city's taxpayer dollars cannot possibly cover everything that an all-American city wants to have. So I think it's important, very important, that people understand that no city taxpayer dollars are involved in this proposal. We aren't getting anything for free, in fact, we're offering to pay for everything. We do currently pay, right now, for space for both using the beach and the space under the observation deck, so we don't even get things for free right now. Most of these organizations that I just talked about do require memberships and do we, do have fees that help fund the programs, but unlike some of those organizations, we do not receive funding from the city of Marquette, and we operate on a volunteer basis. So I just asked some people to reconsider some misinformation that I think is, is being spread by the Marquette Citizens for City Lakeshore Preservation. One, are we really a private members-only group? In the sense that we're not government, yes, we are private, just like all the other nonprofits that are mentioned, but we do provide a public recreation program, and anyone can become a member. Is the proposal's development private? As currently approved, the roof of the building and the grounds are open to the public at all times, so in essence, the entire footprint is open to the public. The interior boat storage area serves a public purpose for the public recreation program. The proposal also includes additional benefits, such as the handicapped accessible launch dock, kayak storage area, and public gathering places. And now, as you've heard, we first proposed, and the planning commission also recommended that the city own the building, also making it public in that sense. The assertion that our private group is being granted special privileges, you know, we just, I'll take it back to what Chief Angely said about the YMCA, Moosewood, Skate Plaza, Nokamenon Pavilion, and other things that were arranged in this manner. The assertion that this is a private clubhouse. Our proposal is for a boathouse. It's now of reduced complexity because of listening to citizen concerns. I would invite you to check out the facilities of the Community Rowing, Inc. in Boston, just for an example of what a boathouse, how a boathouse can become a center for community and a place where people can improve their fitness and social connectedness within a After being reminded of all the things that private organizations do for the city, I think it's more important that we consider whether a development provides public benefit and not so much whether it's developed by the public or by the private sector. So if anything belongs on the waterfront, I think a boathouse does, it has to be. I just want everyone to understand that saying no to the boathouse is like saying that you don't want rowing in your community. We need a home within the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodward.
Thank you. Commissioners, thank you once again for listening to this topic. It seems to be a focus of more meetings than you need. I want you to know that Chief Angely really has done a great job in terms of working with us and working with other people who are concerned about the project and trying to find a common ground, not only has Chief Angely done a lot of work, but the city staff has. I only have a few things that I want to emphasize that Kelly just talked to you about. I'm always surprised and rather appalled by the information that is presented to the community by the Lakeshore Preservation Group that is so much of a misinformation and misrepresentation of our club. And the, the one thing, the word "private" that they continue to put out there is one of those things. I think Kelly did a great job of explaining, and I know all of you are aware of this, I think of some of the public still is not aware, that a 501(c)(3) really is a community good organization. And we, we do a lot of community good. Not only do we teach a lot of rowing, we teach it not only to adults but a youth program, and there are some children in the school system that are benefiting from this, from our, our programming. Yes, we have dues. We also have scholarships for anyone who feels that they cannot afford the dues, so I am not aware of anyone who would be refused membership to our club. And in that sense, we really are just a public recreation provider that wants to do something for the city, and, and what we were wanting to do, our original proposal was to open access, not closed access, but open access to the waterfront for human-powered watercraft. So from the beginning, our original proposal included not only storage for our, our boathouse, our, our equipment, but for Northern Michigan University's equipment, for anyone who else who wanted to store human-powered watercraft within the facility. And we wanted to make other public things available, the launch site, the universal access launch, the observation tower, and really, we wanted it to look like a park, to something that's very inviting and would welcome people and be part of the Hiawatha Water Trail. There are things that we have, we were hoping for, that would be ideal for our boathouse project, and we do think of it as a community boathouse project, that we have made accommodations for during the process, and I think that those are the best we can do in accommodations. We do still have large boats, so the word "smaller," I'm not so sure how much smaller we can get, but we can do something reasonable and we can, you know, eliminate the meeting space or the space for our ERGs, and we can eliminate showers, and we can continue to rent the space below the observation deck where our current clubhouse is. So I think that this partnership between the rowing club and the city is very much like a lot of the other partnerships that Kelly has talked about, that have really made our community something to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Verito, you desire to speak on this item?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. Most of us have enjoyed the site of rowing skulls in the harbor for years. This season, they remind us of a boathouse that's divided our community. Last May 12th, a rower stepped over the line suggesting the Lakeshore Task Force recommendations are outdated. Our citizens and visitors want a natural shoreline then and now. Obviously, we'd have benefited by being able to see an outline of what we just heard in The rowing club members seem to avoid commenting on the key issue, which is the location, not so much this public versus private, or whether it's going to be accessible, which it'll have to be regardless of where it's put by mandate. No information was provided in your agenda supplement, at least a library's copy, as to what the nature of this proposal update was. You gave the public no way to prepare an effective comment. Which two of you were in the manager's office last Friday to help put this agenda together? For two years, the manager has received polite tips publicly and behind the scenes on how to make his agendas clear for the public, to provide the applicable site plans, item descriptions, and whatever. Here, we were forced to assume that maybe the update dealt with the recall petition or possibly a more suitable location, the latter being the case. You were asked to schedule a second reading for July 14th to give us our due opportunity to comment and what we ought to have been enabled to prepare comments on tonight. Please give us the information we need to prepare. Now, this sounds like, this is why it sounds like the same thing over and over. Now, here's a brand-new example.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Mr. Sanders, would you like to make any comments?
I, I really only was here tonight in case there were some questions about the design work so far that we've done for the rowing club, but I just wanted to assure everyone and Chief Angely that we are listening to the comments that have come before us and is related to size and maximizing public space and so on, but on that Founder's Landing site, the Hampton site, we're really just getting rolling on that and collecting some site data, so obviously, it's a priority for UPCRC and for us, and we'll have some more concrete preliminary work for you to look at in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any other comments, commissioners? Could perhaps the chief of police retrieve our city manager? Or, well, excuse me, I guess we may have some comments, I'm sorry.
Well, I'd like to thank Chief Angely for his, for his report tonight. I think, in thinking about this, tonight is the sixth public meeting we've had on this issue, and in fairness, the first four probably no one knew about, and that's not uncommon. I mean, who, unless you, not everyone sits down and says, "Oh, boy, the planning commission is meeting tonight, I'm going to go to it and listen," or "The Parks and Rec Committee is going to discuss this." That just slips by, so it is often the case that when an issue comes up, that people aren't aware of it until it's actually done, and I think that was the case in this issue. The commission acted on the recommendations of the planning commission and the Parks and Rec Board and the, and the city manager, and I think that's where the problem started. And as a result, we had a work session, which I personally felt was very helpful, and I think that the people who had concerns about it raised appropriate issues to certainly convince, I think, the commission to say, "You're right, that's just not the right spot, we'll consider moving it." And I think also, I don't know this for sure, but I think that the commission would also, once this is solved, to everyone's satisfaction, that we would support an ordinance to not allow any development there. I, I think that's a given, based on what we heard and the directions we gave to Chief Angely. Now, I have to comment to Mike Nyger. Mike, you have a perfect right constitutionally to recall us, that's fine. I don't know what else we could do to accommodate both sides. I think, hopefully, within the reasonable future, that we'll have to have another work session, and I think all the questions that were raised, I hope were answered tonight because, again, one side doesn't know what the other side is talking about. I have to take it face value, this is what's happening. I, I think it's leading to progress, and I'm willing to stand for a recall if my basic actions on this have been despicable or wrong, but I don't think they have been. And I would, I think the issues that he raised, I think are valid, and it's up to him to decide what to do. So appreciate your comments, and I, I, we're going, I think we'll continue to work on this, and as far as I know, no one ever said this has got to be done by such-and-such-a-date. It's got to be done when we can get people to agree, us, you guys, and, and move on to other issues. So thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyne. Any other commissioners have any comment on this item? Okay, we're finished with this item, we'll be moving on. The next item on the agenda is professional services for special legal counsel. City clerk, would you please read the background that you may have?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Recently, Schramm Superior Properties LLC and Alice Rentals LLC filed petitions in the Michigan Tax Tribunal challenging the property tax assessments on properties owned by these entities in the city of Marquette. City administration asked the law firm representing the city and We Energies Tax Tribunal litigation to make a proposal to represent the city in these cases as well. Attached for the commission's consideration is a proposal for legal services prepared by Jack Van Covering, dated June 12th, 2014, on behalf of the law firm of Bloom Sluggett Morgan. Fiscal effect, real property tax, taxable value in dispute for these properties is $745,000, which would result in a loss of $11,117.27 to the general fund. This item will require a budget adjustment to take effect. Recommendation: Approve a professional services agreement for special legal counsel with Bloom Sluggett and Morgan PC. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. Mr. Verito, you wanted to address this on this item?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. For years, Mr. Ryan has occasionally reminded us of the tax benefits provided by the ICOR that dominates the north end of town and much of Prescott Park. Your supplement placed the disputed amount at $745,000, the result of city administration's request to have We Energies Law Firm prepare tonight's proposal. Does this $745,000 represent almost three-quarters of the roughly $1 million tax contribution from the power plant, the money that Mr. Ryan feels is worth diminishing our quality of life over? of life over? If so, then the benefit of keeping the plant, whose future is already uncertain, is diminished should the tax tribunal decide in their favor. The other concern is your apparent need to hire additional legal counsel at $275 per hour while we simultaneously employ a city attorney. How many hours are we apt to pay $275 for to settle this case when we ought to work toward reducing the hideous footprint of that monster to the size needed for city backup power or to consider another man's suggestion to relocate our municipal plant there to beautify our south lake shore? And I've still reserved time to speak on item nine.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Commissioners, what is your pleasure with this item? Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
I'd like to move to suspend the rules for discussion.
Okay. Do we actually have to have a support and a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ryan, supported. Any further comment, or should we just vote?
I just think it represents an issue that we should all be aware of.
Okay. Mr. Ryan, any further? Did you want to regard the motion, or should I call for a vote?
Are we doing the motion on suspending the rules?
Yes, yes. That's what we're doing. Okay. All in favor of suspending the rules, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. The rules have been suspended. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
Well, a couple of questions, if I can. I think of staff. What I'm reading here is that we have bundled properties from one landowner that is taking them to tax tribunal. Is that correct?
Yes.
And did that go through our Board of Zoning Appeals at all, or Board of Appeals, or is that going straight to tax tribunal?
I believe it was protested in the usual fashion, and then they filed with the tax tribunal.
Do we have many cases where we have a landowner with multiple properties taking them up to tax tribunal?
This is the, I think this is the first one I recall. There may be others, but this is the first one I can think of as we sit here. I mean, we've done some others over the years, but I can't remember if.
I just find, I mean, this is my sixth year, and I've never seen that before, so I'm a little.
That would be my recollection as well.
A little surprised. And so everyone is very clear. I believe this is Mr. Jesse Schram that is taking them up to tax tribunal. Is that correct?
I believe that he is either a member or the member of one or both of these entities.
And this is the same Jesse Schram that's running for city commission? I believe.
I don't know who's on the ballot this year.
It is. I just find that to be absolutely amazing, and I thought it would be very important that the public understand exactly what's going on. But I have nothing further. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
There seems to be some misunderstanding with our last speaker. This does not involve the We Energies plant at all. This just would involve the same attorney who was representing us for the We Energies plant.
Correct.
This is on a totally separate case. Have we ever used our local, our city attorney to go to the tax tribunal?
I've actually handled a number of tax tribunal cases for this city. I think that the administration's thinking on this one is because of the nature of this case and the trend that's happening that maybe we want to make a stand. And Mr. Van Covering is a, not only does he specialize in this area, he's a former chairman of the Michigan Tax Tribunal.
Right.
And very familiar with this. I think he was, is involved in maybe some of the dark stores litigation as well.
I know his credentials are strong. That's why we engaged him in the We Energies case. I guess my concern is kind of an open-ended agreement we're getting into here on a property where our loss is basically $11,000. So I know there are some principles at stake, but I guess I would just share that one thought with my fellow commissioners, that the amount, the amount of tax revenue, and that's for one year, of course.
Correct.
That multiplies year after year. So I'm not, I'm not saying I'm against this. It's just one of the things that concerns me as far as hiring probably the most expensive tax tribunal representation on this case.
I think the dilemma is that if we put a limit on it, we reach the limit, and he may not be done. So, but I understand your trepidation. I agree. I'm sure staff will, will try to manage the contract as cost-effectively as possible.
Commissioner Coyn, anyone else? Any other commissioners? Commissioner Campana?
If he were to win this decision... Would there not be others that follow him? And then, one after another, we're going to have problems.
Possibly.
So, let's get a ruling now. I would hate to see more and more and more. It's going to happen with the dark box, empty box, dark box. So I think it's good that we address it now.
Your Honor, the question isn't whether we address it now, it's who represents us. And I'm not arguing against the recommendation. But, you know, we're going to, we have to go to the tax tribunal, or else just give in, I guess, so.
Anything further from any commissioners? Hearing none, I guess I would ask for a motion. Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
I will motion to approve a professional services contract. Correction. I will motion to approve a professional services agreement for special legal counsel with Bloom Sluggett Morgan PC.
Thank you. Is there a second to this motion? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
Okay. Then moved by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Reynolds to enter into a professional service agreement with Bloom Sluggett and Morgan. Commissioners, or Mayor Protem Stonehouse, anything further on the issue?
Well, I think certainly Commissioner Campana was directly correct when he stated that this is the dark stores issue, and this is going to be a piling on for some time. We need to beat them and represent our very best, our very best team forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Reynolds, anything further?
No, I just echo Commissioner Stonehouse that we need to have the best representation possible because we could lose a lot of money in future years as well.
Any other commissioners? Mr. Ryan?
I'll support this, but I hope we do manage it carefully because attorney fees can mount up very quickly on a case like this.
Right. I agree. And I guess I would just chime in that our attorney has ably represented us at many tax tribunal cases. This is a unique type case. We're concerned about the precedent it set, and we're looking for some expertise in this field. And it's not to say that our city attorney does not provide us able representation, or I think he would be, he would be one to recommend that we do this, so.
Point taken. All in favor of the, well, it's been moved by Commissioner, Mayor Protem Stonehouse, supported by Commissioner Reynolds, to enter into a professional service agreement with Bloom Sluggett and Morgan for the defense of the tax tribunal case, Schram Superior Properties LLC and Alice Rentals LLC versus City Marquette. All in favor of the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed to the motion, say no. The motion is passed unanimously. The last item that we have is a resolution regarding amendment to boundaries for local development finance authority. City Clerk, do you have some background to read on this?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. On August 29th, 1988, the city commission created a local development finance authority, or LDFA, pursuant to Public Act 281 of 1986. The boundary was established to be River Park Complex. And an LDFA is a state-recognized mechanism that local units of government can utilize for economic development purposes, such as creating jobs and increasing tax base. The state allows a municipality to have only one LDFA. The city and Northern Michigan University have been approached by a smart zone district established by M-Tech, which consists of the cities of Houghton and Hancock and Michigan Tech University, to become a satellite smart zone district. The purpose of such a district is to help eliminate conditions of unemployment, underemployment, and joblessness, and to promote economic growth in the city. The goal of a smart zone is to attract high-tech and similar-type jobs and to be able to utilize special funding opportunities in order to attract such jobs. In order to accomplish the purposes of a satellite district, an LDFA must be established. Since the city already has now an established LDFA, the next step would be for the city to amend the boundaries to include the entire city of Marquette. This is a necessary condition to be successful in applying and obtaining designation as a satellite smart zone. This action would also put the city in better position to obtain special funding for economic development when such opportunities arise in the future. Tax mileage rates and other fees will not increase as a result of this action, and the current city limits will also not change as a result of the action. In order to amend the LDFA boundaries, a public hearing must be conducted. This public hearing was conducted at the April 28th, 2014 city commission meeting. At that time, only the public hearing could be held. After a 60-day waiting period, the city commission can then adopt a resolution which will amend the LDFA boundaries. The earliest a smart resolution could be acted on would be at the June 30th, 2014 city commission meeting. Since the public hearing was held, there have been numerous outreach efforts by the city and M-Tech staff to present information and to answer questions and concerns by the city's residents. These efforts have included four public forums, video presentations, and interviews with various media. City and M-Tech staff have also met and talked via the telephone, email, and in person with city residents on an individual basis. The resolution to amend the boundary of the LDFA is hereby presented. Fiscal effect: None by this action. Recommendation: Approve a resolution regarding amendment of boundaries to the local development finance authority. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Mr. Verito wanted to speak on this item, but apparently not.
He wanted to speak on nine.
Yeah, well, this would be the new nine, I guess. That's the way I took it, so. Anyway, he's gone, so. Commissioners, what is your desire with this item? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve a resolution regarding amendment of boundaries of the local development finance authority.
Okay. Is there support for the motion? Mayor Protem Stonehouse?
I will support the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Ryan, anything further on your motion?
Yes, this is only a small part of it, but this is a major part of our moving forward with the smart zone concept and the next Michigan. And we've certainly had very, very positive support from so many quarters, including here on the commission, for this proposal. I know some legitimate questions were raised during public comment, but these are issues that have been considered. Certainly, there will be qualified people appointed to manage this process by, for the city of Marquette. And it's worked very successfully in Houghton with Michigan Tech. And certainly, we have an outstanding model to look at. So this is, again, just a piece of the action that needs to occur for us to be able to move
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, just to put a little different spin on it, I think, we always have to look for the future. We always have to try and aim for the future and figure out how we're going to grab onto and shake it down to the ground. And the biggest complaint in the Upper Peninsula, and city of Marquette included, has been that we export three things. We export wood, rocks, and our kids. And we export the kids because they can't find good jobs at home. And this is an opportunity to change that dynamic. We'll still sell rocks and wood if you'll buy it. But by golly, I want to be able to make sure we have a good opportunity to find good, high-paying tech jobs here in the Marquette area. And that's really why I'm supporting this so very strongly.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stonehouse, any other commissioners? Is there a comment on the motion?
I guess I would just comment, kind of an addition to what Commissioner Ryan said, we do in fact have a local development finance authority. It was established in 1988. It's been dormant for a number of years. The members who probably served on it, terms have expired. We had to go through kind of a complex process to regenerate the authority, change the boundaries, and we will have to refill the authority with members, and we're hoping that we will. I found that in our boards and commissions that actually have statutory authority and are making decisions, it's a little easier to fill than just simply the simple advisory ones. So I think we will find people to flesh out this authority. And without anything further, I guess, call the question. Commissioner Campana, anything further?
Just to repeat what's been said many times before, there are no new taxes with this, which people always ask. And we're not going to lose any, the increase in taxes, the city's not going to lose on the increase because we would never have had them anyway. So when you got new businesses going and you got taxes going up, that's where you capture it. Had those new businesses not been there, we would never have had them. So it's plus, plus, plus for the city and everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Any last comments by any commissioners? Commissioner, or Commissioner Coyn?
Question. When will we be appointing these folks?
Pretty quickly. Not tonight, but.
Well, could I ask the city manager if he has a timeframe when we will?
Well, there's seven members that the city commission appoints. There'll be two members that MAPS can appoint, Northern can designate members, the county can designate members. And so for the, for the member organizations, we'll be sending out letters inviting them to submit names once the commission takes action this evening. And then we've been recruiting through all of the board and committee announcements for the past several months, interest in candidates. And so we'll continue to do that. And I know the city commission has been reaching out through its efforts and looking at all of the boards and committees and rejuvenating those, as well as looking at the new requirements they anticipated with this to bring candidate names to the table. So it will come as quickly as those names are vetted and as we can put them forward to the city commission.
So there is no time limit, per se? By such-and-such-a-date, we have to have this board being seated?
Not the board, per se, but in, as part of the overall smart zone application process, the most critical element that this board will take on next will be how to generate the revenues to finance all of the smart zone activities and the development that Commissioner Ryan was speaking to. And that application process has some pretty tight timeframes. So we will be looking to have LDFA members appointed before the end of July, about midway through August. So we're hopeful that we can get all of the candidates identified over the course of the next three meetings, and that we'll be able to bring them on board. Once seated, then they'll have the opportunity to sit down with CFO Simpson to take a look at all of the different elements of the smart zone application process associated with implementing a TIF district. And that's something, then, after their opportunity to familiarize themselves, they will come back then before the city commission and make a proposal about what type of TIF capture should be established to support them.
Okay. One final comment. Would it be prudent, or is there an existent job description or description of responsibilities for a member of this group? If I'm sitting out there, I have no idea what you're talking about, what you need, what my qualifications should or shouldn't be. And I think that, is that, does that exist?
It exists in some form, sir. We're certainly going to be updating it for people as they ask us specific questions. But CFO Simpson's been distributing something, and we can provide a copy of that to anybody on request.
I think it ought to be on the website, you know, because it's a profoundly important appointment. These are the guys and girls who are going to do this and manage it and be in charge of it. So you got to have really good people, and I think they ought to, before you, if anybody asks you, "Well, what do you do?", I need to have an answer. This is what your responsibilities are.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And your terms.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think we really need that, rather than just say, you know, "We're looking." I mean, I don't know who, how, what would I say to somebody? I don't have a clue. So I think that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Coyn. Anything further from anyone? I think we need to vote on the question. It was moved by Commissioner Ryan, was seconded by Mayor Protem Stonehouse to adopt the resolution regarding amendment to boundaries of the local development finance authority. This takes a roll call vote if it's not unanimous. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously, so we don't need any further roll call vote. That finishes the business portion of our agenda. And the next item is comments from commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner Cam Benzi.
Thank you. I just have one comment tonight, and that is about our trucking ordinance. Certainly, after our meeting, I sat around thinking, here we are again. You know, if it's not one group of people that's upset, it's another. It's our neighbors. It's this street. It's that street. It's a township. So in a way, we are having the same dialogue. We're not resolving anything. We seem to be stuck in, "You didn't do what I want. I don't live there. I don't care." We seem to be stuck in, you didn't do what I want, I don't live there, I don't care, when all of it comes down to the fact that we want the same thing, and that's a bypass. And my interest in sitting down with the township this week, with our subcommittee, and Jim Iwaniki from the county, is to say, how are we going to get it done? Because I think everyone in our community wants this done, and they want us to get the best possible way to get it done, the quickest. I'm more than willing to give up yours four through eight of the money that Lundin said they would pay us to drive through our streets. I would ask the township and Jim Iwaniki of the County Road Commission, the County Road Commissioners, and also our county commissioners to help us out, too. What are you going to do with the $40 million estimated of the state severance tax that you're getting from this mine? Could you give us a little bit of that money to put towards a bypass? I can't speak for my fellow commissioners that sit on the subcommittee with me or my fellow commissioners up here, but I think the time has come when we need to get serious about how we're financially going to get the bypass done, because there is no money coming from our state legislators. As much as they want to help us out, the money's not there. And I think all of us need to rise to the occasion. I think all of us need to be on the same side of this and get this done. So my only comment is, let's quit having the same conversation with different groups of people, some happy, some mad, and let's work together to get the bypass built. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cambenzi. Commissioner Campana?
To remind everybody, this is the Fourth of July. There will be fireworks. I've been told it's the biggest, best fireworks ever, so put that on your calendar. Another attraction will be Sarah Reynolds and myself will be working the beer tent at Last Call, the last two hours. I will show her how to pour beer, because I don't think she knows how. I would like, at this point, to also congratulate Marty Munger. I've known Marty a long time, and he's very deserving of the award he won. I was going to comment on David Brazard, but I see we have ongoing information on it, and I kind of feel, he's one that has, you know, got rid of his boat slip early, but there's more to it than we can address at this point, but I kind of feel some pain for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campana. Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse?
A couple of quick things, if I can. Trucking ordinance, before thou condemn it, please read it and understand it, because some of the folks that were talking tonight plainly had not read it and did not understand it. So I ask you to do that, and then I think that would be very helpful for the public discourse on it. For example, vehicles delivering to Northern Michigan University do not go all the way around down Wright Street, et cetera, et cetera. They would, in fact, leave the truck route at the most convenient point, direct to the university, drop off their load, and leave, again, by the most direct point, which is really what any vehicle servicing Marquette would do. And the ordinance is written very clearly with the idea of keeping public commerce moving within the city. So again, please read it, and I think that would be most helpful. Mr. Manager, anything about the nondiscrimination ordinance? I think we had discussed that a while back. Is that somewhere in vision?
Thank you, Your Honor. Actually, I was going to mention to Ms. Gordon that we haven't forgotten about that. People have probably noticed from the tenor of tonight's meeting, we're extremely busy with all the different things that are going on in the city. It was our hope, based on the comments of Ms. Gordon, the people who'd come from the Unitarian Church earlier, and then pursuant to the mayor's direction about the upcoming September 6th celebration, that we'd try to schedule that consideration for the first meeting in September.
Thank you. Next item, if I also can. Mr. Pence talked about the county so willingly coming forward to help the city finance the lawsuit against, or rather, with the tax tribunal, We Energies, and certainly, I think, the city thanks the county profoundly for that. But please understand that that was not an altruistic motive on the part of the county. They lose a lot of money if We Energies goes away. So they have a big dog in this fight, the same way the county, the same way the city does, and again, we're very happy for their support and cooperation on that. I would commend Chief Angeli again for his work in trying to resolve the boathouse issue. I think he's really done a terrific job on that. And one last comment on the recall. When you recall somebody, when you even begin to do that, that puts poison on the water that stays there for a very long time, and as, whether the reason is valid or not. And what happens is, it's very difficult, then, to get people to run for public office because they feel that, gee, if I make a wrong vote or a wrong decision, somebody's going to try and recall me for the most trivial thing. And that really does not do the process any good at all. So I would caution the public that, as some of the speakers have mentioned, recall is to be taken under the most severe circumstances only, because if you want to have good people sitting up here, then you've got to help get good people to sit up here, and poisoning the water like that is just not the way to do it. So that said, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Stonehouse. Commissioner Reynolds?
Well, first off, I did have a whole soliloquy typed out, but Mike Angeli did a really good job of organizing a timeline, and I think he did a good job specifying what's going on with the boathouse project. My only comments, now that we talked about G.G. Gordon, I'm excited for that on September 6th, was, I'm not sure where Mike Niger stands with regard to, and, you know, maybe you can come up with me, come up and talk to me afterwards, but what Mike has proposed, and what Mike has proposed, Mike Angeli has proposed to you, has me a bit confused as to what you want. I, what you stood there and said and what Mike Angeli said seemed like to be the same thing, so I'm not sure I quite understand. And no one, and you have not come to me specifically and explained your position, and I would have listened. But now, I'm kind of angry. But that is all, and yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. Commissioner Ryan?
Yes, I was elected to this commission about five and a half years ago, and again, two and a half years ago, and anybody who watches knows I say what I think, and I tell people why I vote and what I think. And I want to tell you that I think this idea of a recall is just a terrible idea for the city of Marquette. I mean, this makes absolutely no sense. The individual or group proposing this, what they are proposing is that the city of Marquette would go into next year with one city commissioner with any experience sitting at this desk. I mean, this is, this makes absolutely no sense. Three of us are already leaving, and three more would leave under this proposal. I can tell you, it took me at least a year and a year or two to learn what was going on when I got here, and I'd been involved with a lot of things in the past. I think this is throwing the city of Marquette under the bus, I really do. This is irresponsible. At a time when we're dealing with issues like the Presque Isle Power Plant, what's going to happen? They're protesting their taxes. We don't know what Duke Life Point is doing with Marquette General Hospital. We've got real issues with the state of Michigan and how they're going to be changing state tax financing. We're trying to deal with projects to grow the economy of Marquette through the Smart Zone and the Next Michigan program. I know this boathouse issue is important to some people, but if we're going to make decisions in the city of Marquette based on one issue like that, then I would be hugely disappointed. I was going to say, this doesn't affect me directly, but it does affect me because I'm a citizen of Marquette, and this would not be good for the city of Marquette, and I hope if any of you are approached in this regard, you will say no, because it doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Coin?
Hey, well, I'm not angry, so I'll just say, I would hope that the process could continue with communication and talking with one another and working this out. That's all I can say, and I would hope that that would happen, and the other stuff would go away. I have a bunch of stuff. I'm glad Mr. Doobie stayed, and I wanted to address your concerns. Could I ask him a question, Your Honor?
Yes.
Where do you live on McClellan Street, exactly?
I'm a quarter of Milburgh.
Okay, thank you. I think why I wanted to know that is I want to know exactly where you were impacted, and to clarify what Commissioner Stonehouse said, and I'm really sorry, Jason, the assessor for Marquette Township and one of our county commissioners left after making comments about the truck ordinance, which they had not read, apparently, because in fairness, I understand the issues that you have with Marquette, with McClellan Street. And the truck ordinance has a gap in it, and that gap is there for a reason. It's not federally, been federally funded, and we want to not have a haul route of logging trucks and gravel trucks and coal trucks driving up and down McClellan Street. It is reasonable, I mean, it is not a reasonable position to take to say, I don't want any trucks on my street. That's not, and you have not done that. But what the truck route ordinance says is that a truck coming from Gwin, for example, can drive into Marquette and deliver something, and they can drive on McClellan Street. A truck leaving Northern Michigan University right now, as they are doing, picking up rubble from Jammerich Hall, which is being torn down, can drive down McClellan Street to the dump. That's reasonable. You're not saying that. It is not reasonable to say, we don't live here, but we'd like you, we don't care about the people who live in Marquette. We want a truck route, north-south truck route down your street. Baloney, any more than I have a right to say, I think you should have a truck route going down 510, down Midway, or whatever. I don't have any right to do that, and if I did, I would be completely inappropriate. So I think this commission is trying to look out for people who live on McClellan to not have a haul route, and that's why that's there. And it's interesting that the two people who were very critical of it had not read the truck route ordinance. So I'm sorry they left, and we will be having more conversations with them. Maybe I am a little angry, I'm angry about that. Okay. G.G. Gordon, I would like to address you. I was en route here when you presented that. I wasn't here, and I asked the manager about that, when are we going to do that? And I'm glad to hear his answer tonight, because the original answer I got, well, this is all covered by federal laws, and I'm not sure, and even if it is, I think it's symbolic for us to do that, and we are going to do it. I think you heard, I don't know if you heard, but previous meetings, we all agreed, we want to go to that, and we want to have that ordinance. So thank you for reminding us gently and kindly. I agree with Commissioner Dave's comments. I read all the realities about Mr. Brazard's travails. The one question I have is, obviously, they followed all the rules, but why can't, that doesn't mean we can't eventually change the rules. I'd like some discussion as to why the rules actually exist, and if I can't be convinced, then I think we ought to think of changing the rules down the road. Okay? I don't know. So convince me. I, on two more positive notes, the mayor mentioned that we're going to have, in the city, Duke Life Point on the 2nd of July presenting the helicopter service public forum. Every night this week, Monday through Wednesday, this commission has budget hearings at 5:15, and I would hope we would ask that we could get out of here by 7:00, so we could attend that and be receptive to the public's comments, because that's what it's for, and listen to Marquette General's plans. So Mr. Simpson isn't here, but I think we all ought to, like, whine Tuesday night and say, couldn't we get out on Wednesday early? Because, okay, and the other thing is, that meeting, the mayor didn't know where it was, it's on the third floor of the building where the MRI is, and that's where people get dropped off for treatment. It's kind of a little to the east of the Nelberg Building and on the other side of the street. And all that kind of explains probably why Marquette General wants to move, because it's really, I've worked there for 40 years, and you saw how strained I was to figure out where that was, but it's on the third floor of that building. So good luck finding it. And the last one is, you know, I thought we're having so much problems getting people to serve. I wonder, nice young individual who volunteered to serve tonight, it might be a nice idea to take their picture and put it in the print media and on our website, to say, congratulations to this individual for stepping up and serving on the Parks and Rec. And that then raises the public awareness of people doing it, and it might help recruit people to do it, and also, we need to be sure we make clear to other people serving that they can serve on more than one. So I know that's a lot of mumbling, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Coin. I can picture Conference Room 1, MGH. I've attended meetings there, but I can't direct anyone there any better than you can. I could probably find, but I can't tell you how to get there.
The CEO is in the back of the room, if you're looking for directions.
Well, I suspect that they'll have some sort of feature to direct people there, because they are being gracious enough to hold a public forum. I'm sure they want the public there. That is on July 2nd, Wednesday, July 2nd, 7:00 p.m. in the Conference Room 1. Couple other items I have, I had the pleasure to represent the city in the, at the Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Initiative in Thunder Bay. We hosted that conference last year, so we wanted to reciprocate and have someone attend this year, and I enjoyed the conference. It's, the group is, the purpose of the group is to protect the Great Lakes, and certainly, we all understand the importance of Lake Superior to our city. It's priceless. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that lake. And it struck me in this conference that our Canadian neighbors are more serious about stewarding that lake than we are. We all take for granted, I think, we, we, we all want to not soil it, and I think we take, we make some efforts to do it, probably not to the extent that our Canadian neighbors do. In fact, there was only two people from Michigan at that conference, myself and the mayor of Grand Rapids. There was five people, five mayors from Wisconsin and one from New York, and there was probably about 50 from Canada in all kinds of cities along the Great Lakes and a few on the St. Lawrence Seaway. And there's a number of resolutions that were passed, Asian CARP, keeping the plastic beads out of the lake, double-walled tankers for transporting fossil fuels around the lake or through the lake or under the lake, and planning to reduce nutrients from flowing into the lake, planning to reduce other negative impacts from going into the lake. And so, like I said, it's a group, I would, I'm not going to be here after November, and I encourage my colleagues to follow up and continue active, being active with this group. I think it serves us all well, and certainly, the lake is something we obviously need to preserve for our, for our future generations. I also support the nondiscrimination ordinance. I think we'll move that along. I know, as the city manager alluded to, they, you know, we've, we don't, we don't have a full plate anymore. We have, we measure our things in full platteries, so. The manager and the attorney have been, have been busy, and hopefully, they'll break away some time to move this forward. Our state has talked about doing this. I would hope that they do that. I'm not going to hold my breath that that actually happens, so I think it's important that we send a message, and we do this so that all people in our community are included and protected. Finally, on Mr. Brazard, I would hope that the city manager is in contact with him. I guess I find that if, if we re-rent the spot, usually, if you re-rent an apartment, you're obligated to not keep the security deposit or the rent of the person who gave up the spot, so I think some sort of accommodation can be reached with him, and I agree with Commissioner Coin, perhaps those rules or policies we need to be, need to be looked at. I'm sure there's, there's a good rationale for what we do, but perhaps sometimes it treats people unfairly, so we could look at that. Lastly, the recall. I frankly, I don't necessarily, I always agree with recalls, but I frankly defend the right of a person to hold a recall. I think it's, it, in this case, it's premature. We did not approve a boathouse on the waterfront. We asked the attorney to come back with a license. We have yet to approve that. Theoretically, it could not be approved. I suspect if the last vote was six to one, that it would, chances are that it's likely that it will be approved, but I guess that would be the point of recalling us. I think the, you know, like I said, I believe in the purity of the recall. I think you, there ought to be good reasons for it, but obviously, the legislature had also concerns because they changed the law recently where people in their first concerns, because they changed the law recently, where people in their first year and last year cannot be recalled, because they were concerned about the recalls that were happening throughout the state. With that, I have nothing further. City manager, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. Only maybe cast some light for the community on some of the things that typically happen after meetings like this. I'm scribbling carefully, taking notes on everything that's being discussed, and I typically follow up. For me, although there's frequently not a formal vote on issues, I'm gauging, when you see me staring down the table, I'm gauging the mood of my commission to see if a question were posed, if the majority of commissioners would be interested in discussing it or deliberating on it. And so I'm carefully keeping notes of who's speaking and what kind of things there's interest in. And so we'll be following up on all of the different discussion that you've heard tonight, and I'll list out some of those items here in a moment. Also, with Mr. Brasad, in that particular case, he actually has been working with staff, and he started out through regular contact. We escalated that through the 24-hour response requirement that we've levied. I know staff has previously responded to this. Ultimately, I think Commissioner Coin's nailed it. We aren't in a position where we can just change rules. And so for whatever subsequent consideration the commission might have before it, it'll be about the limits of what we're able to do and what additional action you might need to take to resolve the issue for he and others who might fall into the same sticky wicket. Tonight was a very good reason to attend. We saw a myriad of issues this evening that directly speak to policy impacts on people, on businesses, on the type of things that are going on in the community. And while that debate can sometimes be confrontational or awkward, it's necessary, and something that I am grateful, that as we encourage people to participate in government, we continue to see that kind of presence coming to our meetings. We've had this evening a number of different pieces of informal guidance that we'll be following up on. It appeared the Housing Commission has got some interest from the city commission to coordinate visits. Should we do that, those would be public visits, and we would encourage the community to participate, just as they did for the facilities tours we had last week. We will follow up on all of the recruiting, including the new member PSAs and the LDFA position descriptions and advertisements, to make sure we're getting the best possible candidates. I'd like to thank the president of NMU and Ms. Sarah Jungnickel for stopping by and sharing their positive views on their experiences here in the city. I think that's a great thing to hear, and particularly, a good way to balance maybe some of the other conversation that preceded it and succeeded it. Again, to remind the community that tonight, we conducted our annual audit presentation. We'll be having two more work sessions this week. The one tomorrow is on the CFO Forecast. That's a description of what we expect the year will look like coming at us in 2015, to include all of the deliberation that we've seen tonight with potential revenue impacts from changes in the state tax law, in the MTT tribunal cases, the potential movement out of the city of some of our major taxpayers, and how we hope to address that within our budget and our finance strategies. And then also, on Wednesday, we're going to be talking about the capital improvement plan. What kind of investments are we going to continue to make in the community into our infrastructure and our facilities to make sure we're providing the kind of place that people want to live in, the services they've come to expect? So those are very clearly important meetings. They'll be going on tomorrow night, and on Wednesday night, they'll be convening in Room 103 downstairs, and the details are posted out on our website. Also, in closing, I just wanted to remind everybody, we actually have a short week this week. Friday is the Fourth of July. Our normal operations will be closed for that day, and will be dedicated exclusively to making sure that all events in town, up to and including the fireworks, are going to be as successful as possible, considering wind, rain, storm, and thunder. And Chief Belt will be issuing a PSA to talk about what to expect if we get rain, or if we have to, for some inclement reason, postpone the fireworks and put them on another day. So that should be coming out in all the local media. It'll be available on the website. And as you plan for the Fourth of July, please plan to be safe, but plan to have a great time, because I know there's a lot of good things planned. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, city manager. With that, we're adjourned.